Village of Salado, regular Board of Alderman Meeting, Salado Municipal Building, 301 North State Coach Salado, Texas, January 3rd, 2019. May the minutes reflect that it is 6:30 PM. City Secretary, would you call our role?
Here.
Here.
Mayor Pritchard.
Here.
Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Call water, may we pray? It's another year, Lord. A whole year of opportunities. We live in a beautiful town, and we thank you for that. And we ask that you, blessed, as you have done for years and years and years, we ask that you be in the middle of our decisions that we make. And may those decisions be in the best interest of the village and not ourselves. Lord, be with our people and those who are here tonight. And we pray for their leadership because their task is going to be big. We pray, Lord, that as we go forward, that you take care of those who are ill, those who are sick, and those who have lost a loved one. And, Lord, prepare us for the opportunities at hand, giving us wisdom and courage, and give us the understanding to do what is right. In your name I pray, amen. May we stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state under God, one and indivisible.
We have no citizens communications tonight, but we have some special guests here. And one in particular will, two of them, one will be later, but one I would like to just begin with welcoming him and saying not only are we glad that he's here, but that this man knows what he's doing and how to do it. And it's just an honor to have him come shortly after taking the oath and coming to Salado and being a part of us. Just by, we're glad that you were here. Thank you very much, and thank you for all the support that Temple, Felton, and now the county is going to give us in the years to come. Thank you. You have any money over there?
Gentlemen's.
Very good. Well, we're glad you're here. Thanks a lot, James.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Well, our consent agenda is before us. Number A, approval of minutes to the regular Board of Alderman Meeting for December the 6th, 2016, and approval of minutes of the Special Board of Alderman Meeting, December the 12th, 2018. And C, on the back page, approval of minutes of the Special Board of Alderman Meeting of December 13th, 2018. I'll entertain a motion, please.
And may we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Questions.
Question has been called. Call in favor if you raise your hand, please. Opposed, likewise, passes. Status reports. Before I, Don, before I call him for a moment, Kara, we don't ever say thank you for all the things you've done for us. Running that office back there is huge, and every night we have an Alderman's meeting, here you are, and it's always first class. Thank you very much for being our secretary.
You're welcome.
And I'm sorry you have to work with Don, but we all have our thorns in the side. Don?
I'll just touch on a few quick topics because, as you mentioned, we do have some folks who have schedules and some presentations that they're up against from time to time. First of all, status report on the wastewater project. The lift stations are pretty much finished at this stage of the game, and they're going to be energized next week in anticipation of testing. The grinder pump stations have been ordered for those Main Street properties. They're going to be required to have those stations. We understand those are now in stock, and they're simply waiting delivery on our call. Treatment plant crews are continuing to focus their construction efforts on the plant's metering structure, installation of some yard piping, and site development. They truly are nearing the end of their work on that project. They're going to get delayed by this rain, I can tell you that. The site up there is a mess right now from the mud state. So I would anticipate a few rain days as a result of this week and the previous weeks. So we'll keep you updated on that. But right now, their current schedule puts them in completing that plant at the end of January or kind of beginning of February, and hopefully they can get that. Responses to the RFQ for Treatment Plant Operations Services are due back on Monday. That's this coming Monday on the 7th at 2 o'clock. You know, Alderman Jackson and myself will review those, go through the selection process, and bring you the name of a recommendation as far as the contractor goes. The updated water usage data for the initial customer base is currently being gathered, and we're going to be finalizing the rate structure once we have all that information together. And lastly, the design phase for the Wains Road and Salado School Road sewer mains, that phase is nearing completion. We understand that they're going to be doing sheets next week, which is actually very quick. And then, of course, what we'll do from that standpoint is we'll get a finalized estimate and put that in an agreement that we'll bring to you in January this month with the school district relating to costing of those and paying for the improvements. Status report on the Salado Plaza Drive Improvement Project. You may be aware that the crews have completed work on the concrete patch, that the major asphalt failure we had at the Salado Plaza Drive near the southeast entrance drive of the Salado Plaza. Past attempts have been asphalt repairs. This time we decided to go with concrete, looking at the groundwater intrusion problem we experienced, and also looking at the weight of vehicles that that particular intersection is handling. We see how it works. It seems to be holding up pretty well so far. The estimated cost of that patch is in the neighborhood of about $4,500. Status report on the Salado Police Chief search. We've talked to you about this in a brief view and writing on this, but from the public standpoint, everybody knows what's going on. The village, as you know, is going to be doing the search itself. We're not going to be using a consultant, as some departments do. We're going to handle it in-house. The job is posted on the village's website and has been posted for about two weeks. Other job sites use for law enforcement positions, the posting is also on. To date, we've received more than 20 applications, and we plan to leave that posting up for about another 10 days. And then what we'll do is we'll go through the process of calling that list down and come up with a list of finalists. And then it's our intent to put the finalists through an assessment center, and that probably will happen in late January if not early February. If you're not familiar with what an assessment center is, it's basically a drill that the candidates will go through. That will involve a written exercise, but then they'll also be put through a few mechanical drills where they'll actually, you know, have to deal with some personnel issues inside where we can watch them do that, and also they'll deal with media and see how they handle the public from that standpoint. And then we're looking at doing potentially a reception for one or all of the finalists. We're still working that out right now, how we want to handle that. The whole concept, again, is to get a better picture, a better idea of how they really perform, and you can watch them in action. And then ideally, what we'll do is we'll bring you a name out of that assessment center that we'll come forward and hire. Status report on the Conferences Plan Update. The staff is updating the various data points in the Conferences Plan. You know, there's a lot of analytical data that's the basis of that plan. It looks at things like, you know, what the percentage is as far as the breakdowns on development in the community. It looks at our population and the projections and those type of things. And we're going in and updating those numbers. They've not been updated since that plan was done many years ago. You know, this is the first true update your plan has gone through. So we're working on those updates. At the same time, we're in the process of inserting the proposed check changes that are coming from the Conferences Plan Update Committee document. The idea is to be able to get that document ready and prepared for the Conferences Plan Update Committee to meet, to review, and approve moving forward with the proposed changes. We are hoping to do that next week. We're probably going to ask the committee to wait a week so we can make sure we get all the data, so we're not wasting anybody's time. Once we have all that in place and ready to go, as we talked before, we're going to have a joint meeting between the Board, the Planning, and zoning Commission as well as the Conferences Plan Update Committee, in which all of those changes will be rolled out and discussed, and the committee will have an opportunity to share their thoughts on why they're recommending what they're recommending. The Board, the Commission will have an opportunity to ask questions. And that is a precursor to the actual update approval process, and that will involve basically a public hearing process at P and C, and also a public hearing process at the Board of Alderman. And of course, at the end of the day, the Board of Alderman will be responsible for approving any updates to that plan that come out of this process. So we're almost done with that, and the committee has been very diligent in its efforts, and we appreciate what they've done. Status report on the Main Street Improvement Project. The improvement project, from what Tech Scott is telling us, is almost ready to go from a standpoint of being let. As you know, the project includes limited bike lanes, it includes sidewalks, it includes decorative street lighting and drainage improvements, and also parking improvements. It's a multimillion dollar project that will be funded fully through the state and through the MPO from that standpoint. Improvement, basically the worry is that they're supposed to let that project in February of this year, in other words, next month. Construction expected to begin near the beginning of summer, probably May is what they're thinking about, and of course, that then will start an 18-month construction period. So there's going to be some significant inconvenience that's going to be taking place. They're very sensitive to some of our festivals, some of our events, and we're going to be working closely with the contractor through Tech Scott to make sure that they plan around those, if at all possible, and we think they're going to be able to do that. The way the construction is going to roll out is they're going to start with the drainage improvements, and then once the drainage improvements are done, they'll come back in with the sidewalks and with the decorative lighting. The drainage improvements will probably be the most disruptive piece of the project because they're going to be actually in the street from that standpoint and not doing single lane closures. So I think you're going to see some inconvenience from that standpoint. As you know, the biggest inconvenience, or we're going to see how this project, is going to be the closure of Main Street for that six- to eight-week period, and they're saying that they're still on target for making that closure take place in the January, February 2020 timeframe. That, of course, is our downtime for the business plan, so they're hoping to minimize the inconvenience. There will be a well-publicized and well-signed detour route to get people in and around downtown and around that closure. That, of course, is the Rock Creek culvert that's going to be replaced, basically at the Green Bridge, so you'll see a lot of work in that particular area. Improvement Project, again, taking about 18 months to complete of all those things. That's all I've got, man.
Don, let me just say, I don't think these people in the village knows exactly what they do every time it rains hard here. Don is out there with the people, putting up the barriers on the low-water crossings, and he checks it all through the night. And if necessary, he calls me, but most of the time, he handles it himself. And Don, I want you to know that that is a very, very critical thing for our community, and I appreciate you doing that.
Well, it's not me. It's a team, and we've got police officers that do the job, and we've got a public works woman who also works out in that process. So it's a team effort, and it's just part of the job.
I'm glad that it is part of the job, and I love what you said about team effort. That's great. Thank you very much. And talking about team effort, Salado Police Status Report.
This time I'd like to ask Matt Hicks, who is basically our acting chief, to come forward. As you know, Matt is a sergeant, and it was only natural to move him up into the position with Rick's departure, and Matt's going to be presenting our regular police status reports, and I'll turn it over to him.
All right. My first time doing this, and I don't have the power of my presentation for you guys. I'm sorry. I got told yesterday I was doing it. And I'm kind of an open man.
Could you pull that microphone a little closer? A little closer than that. It doesn't bite. Just a little closer so the people out here can hear you.
Okay. You got me? Okay. So go briefly over what we got. This month, we had for December, 487 calls for service. This is a little drop from last month. Last month, it was about 500. Our response time for priority one calls actually dropped to 3 minutes 35 seconds. That goes from the time that the calls created with dispatch to the time that we arrived on scene, so it's pretty good. Our priority two calls dropped as well this month to 3 minutes 55 seconds. Our priority three calls, which is basically meat complaint and dog calls, stuff like that, it went up, it did increase to 8 minutes and 48. That's within normal range. We had six arrests. Our reports went down, thankfully, to 12. We had 107 violations that were cited for, a little bit increased from last month, probably due to holiday traffic. I think that's about it. I don't have a cops report. We had limited, it wasn't a big turnout this month, a little bit down slope in that. And that's about it.
You might want to talk to them about, you know, Mayor, you talked about the rain and the weather situations that they encounter, and I think it's important to understand that we have a very small police department, but part of their responsibility is the interstate. And yesterday was a classic example of how they can literally get taken off track. Talk to them about what y'all encountered yesterday as far as the interstate.
Okay, so yesterday was a crazy day. I was the sole officer on duty. Officer Dunshee did come in. I had to call him in a couple hours earlier. From the time of 8:00 AM until 3:30, when Dunshee came in, I responded to and worked 12 crashes on the highway, all in about the same area. DPS didn't come in and help. We handled it all while. Great help from Salado Fire Department. They rolled out every single time. Shane rolled out, I was with traffic support. Raleigh came out and helped. The DPS did not enter our city. So I take a lot of pride in that because I like to handle our own stuff when we can. Still, at the end of it, that we do need help, they're able to help us, and they're more than happy to. So it was between that and closing roads and keeping water levels in check is a busy day.
It was just another rainy day in Salado, right? We'll have a cops report at our next meeting as far as the status of the citizens on patrol program. They're making good progress. At this time, I think Matt wants to make a presentation about one of the officers and their recent.
Oh, that would be great.
Yeah, so the best part of my job. So a couple months back, me and Rick kind of sat down before we left, and a big thing for me is early in my career, we never really, you never really get the positives of law enforcement. Your boss is always telling you the negatives. So one thing I want to do is bring that into account, so we finally got an opportunity to do it, which comes up. So I'm going to go ahead and introduce Officer Chris Dunshee. You get to come up here for me, buddy. So real quick, give you a little background. On December 13th, 2018, I think it was about 7 o'clock, 7:30, somewhere around there, I was on the phone with him, and he said, "I got to go." He basically hung up on me. I was like, "Oh, okay." Well, then my phone went off. So Officer Dunshee responded to the State Coach Inn for a choking victim. It was an elderly female. Upon his arrival, Chris was the first officer on scene. He was probably on scene within, probably a minute from the time of dispatch. Officer, Dunshee took immediate action in assisting the 77-year-old female. She was going in and out of consciousness with a complete airway obstruction. During his efforts, he tried the Heimlich and was unsuccessful. Those who have tried the Heimlich, it's very difficult at times, especially on older people or any type of obese or overweight. So with unsuccessful efforts, he went ahead and went to the next thing we do is CPR if we can't clear an airway. So he got her on the ground with the assistance of a nurse, and they started administering CPR. They did two or three rounds of CPR. They couldn't remember the account, which is very common for CPR in a high-stress situation, and they were able to start removing some of the items from her mouth, but could not get a complete airway cleared. Shortly after that, her color started changing back to normal color from blue, and so she started to confuse a little bit more and breathing on her own. At that point in time, Salado Fire and Temple E. Mess arrived on location and started administering advanced life support, so a bunch of measures that we can't do out here. They were able to use their laryngoscope and actually pull out the big chunk of meat, and from what I was told, it was like half the size of your fist. It was a pretty large chunk of meat in her throat. She was awake and alert on scene, and from the medic, she actually tried to fight and argue not to go to hospital. We're here today to bring recognition to Officer Dunshee's quick actions because he, we're only taught basic stuff in the police academy when it comes. So he went above and beyond and was quick thinking from the Heimlich down to CPR. If it wasn't for his efforts, this lady probably could have suffered a very different outcome, brain damage, all kinds of stuff. So we're going to go and place this in his file. It's a file fluffer, for sure, and just keep him, keep that positive attitude going for him. Congratulations.
What I want to do is, we don't have an honor very often of being able to stand with a true hero. Would you mind having your picture taken with us if we come down there?
Sure.
Okay.
Definitely.
Now, does someone have a sale? Oh, there it is, right there. Kara, would, wait a minute, Don, would you please come and stand with us up?
I know, that's okay.
Hicks.
Yeah, I'm good. Say, everyone, three, one, two, three. Let's do one more. Ready? One, two, three.
Got it.
Congratulations. Matt?
Yes, sir.
Don't leave your arm on my hand. That's true. How do you like being chief of police?
I look like the correct answer. It's not bad. I am good. I like being able to take care of my guys, but it's definitely not a job for me this early in my career. I've only been a cop for six years, so I got a lot more advances I need to get before I'm able to sit in the boss man's chair. So I like the opportunity, so.
Well, Matt, I want to thank you particularly for this rain that we had, not for the rain, but for what you guys did. And I know I was here yesterday morning talking to Don about a few things, and you came in, and I stood up and shook your hand, and you said, "I'm sorry. I don't have quite time to talk to you right now. I've got work to do." And that was excellent. That is absolutely excellent today. And then last night, when I was out, your people were out everywhere. You were at the park. You were on the surface of, over here on the west side. In fact, one of the officers was up, had stopped a speeding person going down in the rain. I just want to say thank you for that. With only four policemen that we have right now, you were doing an excellent job, and your leadership is well-known to this community. So, Matt, thank you very much.
No problem.
Hey, Matt, I've got one more question for you. Now, was that what you just did, was that as bad as you thought it was going to be?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Maybe see you next month.
That's a curveball answer. We appreciate your taking responsibility at a difficult time. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, he's actually done a very good job, and I think it's going to be a good learning experience for him, more often with him every step of the way, but it's a...
One of these days, you will be an excellent chief of police soon. You know, maybe you'll be Salado, maybe you'll fall in love with us and just stay here.
You drank your coffee.
Oh, okay. Here we go. Salado Fire Chief Status Report.
Just in time.
Just a little bit longer.
Hi, Shane.
There we are.
And where else?
Mayor Alderman, got my report for the month of December. We had 22 EMS calls in the city. We had 31 EMS calls in the county. We had six fire calls in the city. We had 12 fire calls in the county. And we had nine motor vehicle accidents in the city. And we had nine motor vehicle accidents in the county. So we had, from last year to this year, we increased our EMS calls in the city by 66 calls. We went down on fire calls in 18. We went down 14 calls. And motor vehicle accidents, we went down 10 from 217. And then in the county, we went down, EMS calls, we went down nine calls. In fire calls, we increased 31 calls. And then in motor vehicle accidents, we went down 25 calls on motor vehicle accidents. So overall, city calls went up. We increased almost 50 calls in the city from last year to this year. And county, we stayed almost exactly the same. We went down two calls from 17 to 18 in the county.
Shane, talk to the board if you can a little bit, how the relationship is going to EMS and with the change that we made mid-year?
So EMS has, it's been really nice to have them. They're kind of spoiling us, I guess, in a way because they're probably, I'm going to say, at least 85 to 90% of the calls that we have now. If Temple EMS doesn't beat us there, we're arriving with them, and they do pretty much all the patient care. And so we're not having to wait, you know, for the ambulance to come out of Temple and all that. Hopefully, that'll continue to have them here in Salado at our station. It's, I know it's spoiling some of us because now when we arrive on scene, we just help them out. We're not doing all the patient care and stuff for, you know, for 15 minutes waiting for a box to come out of Temple, so. So that's a positive note there. So hopefully, that'll continue to be that way.
Shane, you do such an excellent job.
Thank you.
For a volunteer fire department, you really do so. And I will, at Fort Hood, I don't know if you realize it or not, but I hear your name from people at Fort Hood. Who in the world is that fine fire chief at Salado? He helped me out, or his people helped me out. But I just want you to know that your reputation is golden.
Thank you.
Now, what can we do? What else can we do to help you beside money? Because we've got a judge here.
Well, we're, you know, we're still, you know, it's just a, it's a yearly battle to make our budget. You know, our budget runs, to run the department, it runs about $120,000 a year. And between the amount that y'all give us yearly and what we get from the county, we still have to come up with about $30,000 in donations to meet our budget every year, so. You know, we're making it, just got a crunch. You know, at times, we do our mail-out every other year, so the years that we do our mail-out, it helps, you know, get us, get some equipment that we need or something. We're making it. I guess we'll see. I don't know when that, you know, or... I don't know when that, you know, we're right at nine hundred calls now for the years. The way it's increasing, you know, we, we may hit, you know, nine fifty to a thousand next year. I don't know where that breaking line is where, you know, there's a couple of guys that start getting paid or something for the department. I don't know when that, when that magical number or, or, uh, I don't know when that'll be.
Well, whenever comes, Shane. We are absolutely sure and know that if you're at the hound, everything's gonna be fine.
Yeah.
Whatever he's there, right?
Hey, Shane, remember we've got the new commissioner here?
All right.
And we've got, uh, another, uh, official back there. Anything else you wanna say?
No. I think, uh, I think he knows where I'm at.
Who are you referring to?
The fire commissioner.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Last, last ten, anything else you wanna say? Thank you, Shane, we appreciate it.
See you later.
Hi, Chadley. Tourism reporter. You've been busy.
Uh, yeah, yeah. I, uh, don't have anything as impressive as my predecessors do, but, uh, I'll try. Um, so, really just an update on the, uh, kind of the marketing efforts that we've been making since, well, the last month. Uh, social media, we've been, uh, posting pretty frequently. This, uh, most frequently that I'm aware of that ever been posted, um, at least while I've been here. And, uh, with Facebook, we've seen a great increase of twenty percent, uh, number of followers. And then ninety percent on, on another, on Instagram, social media platform. Obviously, as our, the number of followers increase, the percentage of growth will probably decrease. But, uh, I think we can still find a, a good number. And it's just a slow, slow process of continuously posting, engaging with potential visitors, and trying to figure out creative ways to, to show off the, the social media. So, I, I envision, um, over this year, trying to start, you know, partnering with different businesses in town and, 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 uh, to grow our, our influence that way. So, um, gonna try to, to explore different things, be a little creative and try things out before we know if they'll work. And the, um, I've been working on the visitor guide for, um, twenty nineteen. A little bit behind schedule, I wanted to have it printed and distributed by now. But, uh, just the holidays made things a little bit, uh, hairy with everybody's schedule. But it's gonna be printing, uh, within the week, probably. Um, I'm just getting the design finalized with my, uh, tourism board. And once that's, um, set, we'll go ahead and print it. I wanna go into a little bit of detail, uh, not too much on, on what the visitor guide will be. I know in the past, what we've been sending out, uh, this is something that we'll be sending out, um, across the state. Mostly probably won't go too much out of state unless somebody requests it, which they can request it online. Um, and if they request it, we'll mail it to them. But, um, within the state, uh, distribution will be along the travel centers, uh, on the entire perimeter of Texas, uh, as well as visitor centers throughout the state and, and, uh, different CBVs and chambers and such. The visitor guide will essentially be a teaser. Um, it's roughly three full pages of information. Don't go into detail too much on independent businesses. We do on restaurants and hotels. But as far as individual shops and attractions and things like that, it's really just designed to intrigue people and try to inspire them to visit the website, um, to try to get them to plan their trip. It's not meant to be, um, um, a directory of any sort. It's truly meant to, um, grow intrigue, get them interested in Salado, show them unique things that, that they may not know about. For instance, we're including historical sites like the Gulf Site, um, things that they can book. Uh, they can stay in Salado and visit that as part of their experience in Salado. So, um, it'll have all sorts of different things where they could, um, that they could engage with while they're here. And then, um, like I said, that'll be going out soon, uh, to all the visitor centers and travel centers. And then the only other thing, really, I've been spending a lot of my time trying to, uh, be more engaged with the community. Not that I wasn't before, but really trying to figure out, um, how I can connect hoteliers, bed and breakfast owners, um, with different businesses in the community. Um, trying to help, um, everybody that's planning an event, try to help them connect with the hotels, to figure out how they can work with them to build packages or whatever it may be to try to increase our, um, overnight stays. So, I, I'm excited about that. Um, it, it's been, been pretty successful so far. All of our, uh, lodging properties are eager to work with, with, uh, different community members, um, whether it be artists or restaurants or, or, or shops, so, um, yeah, all is well.
How did your meeting go this morning?
Uh, it went well. We, it was just a workshop session with just a few of our board members, um, just, um, hammering out the visitor guide. Trying to, you know, they were critiquing it on, 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 uh, diction and, um, and, and punctuation and imaging and, and all of that. Our imagery is still limited. The photography project that we've embarked on is a, it's a long process. I can't really, uh, take, we can't take outdoor photos right now. I don't feel like they'd be very appealing, especially with the creepy way it is. And so, um, we gotta wait till springtime when the grass is grating and all of that, until that can... Uh, so we're still working on limited imagery and things of that nature. But, uh, twenty-twenty, uh, we should have a full catalog of things to choose from, so.
Good is that you were able to get some good Christmas shot.
Wonderful Christmas shots. I, they will, the community will slowly see those too. I'm trying to figure out the best way to, to, to share those. Um, we'll be using them sporadically as we go with marketing. People might, may have seen them on, uh, social media. Uh, we didn't share all of them, but we, but we did get some great, uh, Christmas stroll photos, nighttime, daytime, all sorts of things, so.
I know this doesn't follow your usual lane, it's really up to the chairman of commerce, but how would you say this December goes?
For who?
For all of us. Part of the business.
I, I, I heard, uh, a lot of positivity. I heard a lot of positive things. First weekend stroll, I think as we spoke on, on the last meeting, uh, seemed to go really well for a lot of people. Inclined weather on the second weekend, uh, which I think hindered sales and attendance and all of that. I saw a lot of people around town on, on Saturdays on the trolley, um, throughout December. I think it went pretty well. I haven't heard a lot of, um, I can only go off of what we're telling, so, a lot of positive thoughts.
Very well, very well. Well, I want you to, there's Saturday morning, I'll try to get by the volunteer center. And I want you to, the people that work there are very friendly, very good, very nice. That's, that's good, that's a good, good thing. Well, thanks, Joe. Thanks for doing that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm gonna take the liberty, uh, thanks, Joe. I, I wanna take the liberty to introduce someone to you. Uh, if you haven't met him yet, you need to meet him because you meet him anytime you drive down Main Street through one of the projects that he does or that you have seen. Troy Kelly. Hi, Troy, how are ya? Could you stand up for a second, Troy? In fact, would you come to the microphone for a moment?
Hope you don't ask me my status report.
I'm sure we'd be here the rest of the night if I had to show your status report because you're always into something. What's the latest thing you're into right now?
Can we talk about?
Yes. Okay. Well, several years ago, I founded the Texas Hall of Fame. And we're in the process of doing, planning to bring it to Salado. The Texas Hall of Fame would be a building in the shape of the Texas star. It would be one hundred percent digital. And we're kinda working from the frames of the Texas Hall of Fame, from the frontier to the future. So, that's what we're up to, kind of. We're just now getting around to introducing it to the groups here in Salado. And we need the support of all historical people that are involved in it. And I think it'll really be a boon for Salado, particularly with the sanctuary going in and things like that, so. So, is that what you were looking for? That's exactly what I was looking for. I know right now, it's just very, very infant planning stations. And it'll be brought before us before anything is done. But I just want you to know that truly is a dream, a, a real project. And if you can pull that off, wow. I'm not going to be able to. I'm not old enough. I mean, I'm too old for that, so. Well, I'll bet you do. I just want to say that I, we've created some CAD design images of it. And we'll be putting those out pretty soon. Thank you. You're welcome, Troy. Thank you very much for all you did and for all the structures that you did. And thank you for what you did with Serena Park. That is, that was really good. Uh, if you'd like to see it, here's the door, I'll leave them up here, uh, and let you see. If you'd like to see what, uh, Troy has been thinking about and working with Jackie Mills and two other people and making it happen. But the pictures are here, and if you'd like to see it, uh, please feel free to come up afterwards and take a look. It's really good. All right, let's go to presentations now. Don, if I missed anybody to say thank you to?
Oh, sir, you haven't.
All right, good. All right, presentations, number three. Hey. Presentation by the Bell County Tax Assessor Collector regarding funds, money collected by Bell County for school crossing guard, health, nutrition, child abuse prevention intervention, and drug alcohol abuse. Prevention programs in Salado. Shay, welcome. And we appreciate that check of a million dollars that's going out of Salado, please.
Well, the Commissioner's Court kept half of that.
Commissioner's Court.
Mayor Alderman, thank you for having me this evening. My name is Shay Ludiki. I'm the Bell County Tax Assessor Collector. Also from the Commissioner's Court, of course, you have David Blackburn, the county judge, and Bobby Whitson, Commissioner of Precinct Two. In fiscal year 2018, we registered two-hundred-eighty-five-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-three vehicles in Bell County, and we collected a dollar-fifty off of each of those vehicles. And that money is to be allocated to the cities in Bell County based on population. And that's based on the 2010 census. So, in 2020, comes around and do a new census, we'll do a reallocation of those funds we collect that year. Since the program started in 2001, Bell County has allocated sixty-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty dollars and thirty-four cents to the Village of Salado. Now, I'm gonna read the letter and then give you the check. Dear Mayor, according to the Transportation Code, Chapter 502 dot 403, the county tax assessor collector may collect an additional dollar-fifty per vehicle registration, except for those exempt as established by code, with the approval of the Commissioner's Court. The funds must be spent on existing crossing guard programs. If the school district does not have a crossing guard, the funds may be spent on health, nutrition, child abuse prevention and intervention, or drug and alcohol abuse prevention. The check for this year's allocation for the, for the Village of Salado is two-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. A copy of this letter was also sent to the Salado Elementary School District. Sincerely, Shay Ludiki. Thank you very much.
Shay, I got a check. I'm going to ask the mayor of Bell County, uh, come down with me and we'll receive that check from you.
Mayor, you may want to ask the judge and the commissioner if they'd love to.
Judge and commissioner, would you like to come up to him? Shay, I know you are the judge, what do you think about Bobby?
He is an Aggie, so. Yes, sir.
Shay, thank you very much. Very, very much. And we appreciate that, and we appreciate what you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you. You want a photo of this? Okay, let's come on down this way, Shay. Guys, go come up with a screenshot, please.
It's like that bad personal photo that you call back. Ready? One, two, three. One more time. One, two, three. Got it?
Great.
Come back here.
Shay, it's too bad you sent the school a letter saying that a check is coming in well. Thank you very much.
Mayor, would you invite those three gentlemen every month?
I think that's a wonderful idea.
Especially the judge, I know he must approve all his finances, so make sure he gets, gets good about it.
You gotta intimidate them where they will never come back.
I like that, that's, no, not to intimidate. I'm sorry, Kara, but that's all. Uh, number B. Presentation by the General Manager of the Clearwater Underground Water Conservation District regarding the potential for the designation of a critical habitat for the Salado Salamander. How are you tonight?
I'm very merry, thank you.
It's always good to see you again.
Well, I actually have, I'm, I'm not bearing money. I'm not bearing good news.
Well, thank you very much for coming. Now, we don't have any news. Hold on, just a moment, Kirk, we gotta get this, um, speed on here, so. Does anyone here have, uh, three, four feet?
Yeah, we're there.
Does anybody have a picture of this eagle?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I, I know about it, I just have never seen one.
Yes, sir.
Is it small or large, or?
Oh, they're, they're pretty small, but I've seen them, uh, and I was in St. Louis the day I saw them.
And we have pictures of them on our website. Are just under the bridge, or where?
They're at the spring orifices. There's also a, uh, kiosk that the, that the community, uh, has put down there on the cul-de-sac that's owned by Los Anquistas Barrows. And there's a kiosk that shows a picture of it, it's very, very educational.
Thank you.
I bet I don't get invited back, will I, man?
If you need a room, I know where you can put it.
Uh, Mayor Alderman, I, I did, uh, come to you to give you an update on some news that, uh, and it, it's, it's a real benefit having Don Ferguson here with the city because he's been through these things before. And so, the letter that you see there, uh, is a letter from the Center of Biological Diversity, which is the same group that petitioned in 2004 to list the Salado Salamander amongst others across Texas as endangered. 2012's when we... 2012's when we all mustered together as a community when that petition was brought forward by the, by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. During that time, we put together the coalition, which we were very successful with the guidance of Jonah, who works for, comes from Carter's office, who guided us as communities. We still have that relationship, and that's the reason why I'm excited that the judge and our Commissioner of Precinct Two, Bobby Whitson, is here. We, Bobby, myself, and, and Mr. Ferguson, met with several key people from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to find out the ramifications of this most recent suit, which essentially is the same center of biodiversity who is suing the federal government for their failure to designate the critical habitat associated with the, the Salado Salamander. They had a proposed critical habitat in 2012. We thought, and again, I was, that's one aspect that I wasn't quite as educated on as I probably should have been, but they had a designated critical habitat that starts at the springs of Rockerson Ranch, which is on the west side of Interstate 35, in a 300-meter, somewhat of a, a long football oval that reaches all the way to the property owned by the Barrow, and reaches down below what we call Crutchfield and the Anderson and the, the very lower springs. We have deemed those the spring complex because our research proved that they're, they're inner, they're one large spring complex opposed to several independent springs. And so they did not, at that time, when they made their decision, that was a benefit to us that said, first, the regulatory mechanisms of clear water are sufficient in protecting and maintaining spring flow in the relationships with the community, which means we never let the springs go dry. The lowest level is 1.68 CFS that we're allowed to go to. In retrospect, last night, when Don and I were talking quite a bit on the phone, it was up over 6,000 CFS, and just a little while ago, it's still at over 1,000 CFS. So the range of, of flow is important. These kinds of high flows, the species actually goes back up into the aquifer system even though there's a flushing going on and intermingling with surface and groundwater at a higher rate. Bottom line is, they, they will have to settle because U.S. Fish, in our meeting, which is what Don told me when I called him, he said, please don't panic because I'm a, I'm a reactionary. I'm a part of the community that said, my gosh, what have we done now that we've got to deal with this again? And Don said, no, Dirk, this is probably one of those check-off-the-box things that needs to be addressed, and we as community leadership need to continue on our path. But understand that they will have to make a decision once they settle to prevent going to the courthouse. Settle and put that on their task order might be later rather than sooner for multiple reasons. One is, it just takes a long time for a federal agency to get to that designation, maybe one or two years, according to the people that were with us. They, they can't go on the record of when they'll make that final designation, but it may even be further out, because what we're dealing with right now in our fear and shame was, is a key person in the police department utilizing our gauging system. That's also a federal nexus because we need hire USGS to maintain that, and they are, they're not working right now. And so their staff that we had communication with as we were monitoring, make sure the gauge was still working under these extreme high flows. It gave me an understanding that we're, we don't need to overreact, but we need the community to know that this, this suit is going on. They're not suing us, they're not suing you, they're not suing Bell County. They're, they're being, they're suing the actual federal agency. So with that, it's just a historical document of the things I talked about. But, but what is most important is this, what is critical habitat? And I have extra copies if some want to see this from the community or they can go to our website. It, it simply says what it is and wants to sow what. And I, I just will lead you, keeping this a short conversation, to the backside. It, it, it talks about the myths and realities in the green box. The one that's most important, in my opinion, for those, especially the landowners on either side of the creek, and again, I see that you guys from the Barrow, you obviously could be impacted by this as landowners with the springs being on the, on the edges of your property. It simply says, does a critical habitat designation affect all activities that occur within a designated area, which we assume they're going to designate your proposed area? And the answer to that is no. Only activities that involve a federal permit, license, or funding, and are likely to destroy or adversely modify critical habitat will be affected. If this is the case, we, meaning the U.S. Fish, will work with the federal agency and landowners, including private landowners, to amend their product, their project, to enable it to proceed without adversely affecting the habitat. So this does have a long-term impact, and it may be the one or two or three critical or, or what I would say, threats to the species. One is subjects, and that's being resolved. The other is maintaining an understanding of the species, and we do that in our coalition through the funding and accounting. Bobby is a part of that, and you all may put money forward. That helps us show them that the species is alive and well, and the conditions of the aquifer are, are positive. Pete Diaz does that work, and he's great at it, as well in a cooperative effort with Texas State University. With that said, though, we also are still working with Baylor University to look at that spring shed. What can we do to, to eventually come to an understanding what engineered solutions, site-specific engineered solutions would be opposed to across-the-board regulatory strongarm? I mean, nobody wants that. But the bottom line is, I don't see us happening these kinds of activities except a couple of the threats that are still there. One is the extreme runoff of parking lots down below into the creek, and you can see things get pretty milky when it runs off. Those kinds of storm water control may be one of the things that is identified, that has to be addressed to protect critical habitat, because in that case, if you were to leverage more state, text dot money, and there might be a federal nexus there, you might have to meet some expectations of the federal government when it's all said and done. So will it really impact Clearwater? I'm not absolutely sure, but I think potentially, not today, not tomorrow, but in, in, within a reasonable amount of time, you may find where Don has the, the skill set, the technical background, and the understanding of when that federal nexus may come together, once the habitat's been identified, what it's going to take for all of us to, to put in a critical, an HCP, habitat protection plan.
It's, it's, it's not something to fear, and I think that's what, it's a natural, anytime you think the federal government's engaging, and it's environmental, that hang on, because here it all comes. And, and, you know, it's, it's really not something to fear at this stage of the game. I think the more critical thing that we as a community need to do is we need to stay on top of the situation. It's not something that's going to get designated overnight. It probably is a one- to two-year designation process. There is a full public vetting of that to the point where property owners, communities, agencies have the ability to weigh in on the habitat designation and any type of regulation that may come with that. The thing to do is to stay on top of it, because these things sometimes can grow legs if you're not careful. And, and, and that's the thing that you've got to be careful and, and stay on top of to make sure that you're, you're able to, you know, make your position known and, and make your feelings known, and try to bridge the gap between what their desires are versus what the community's desires are and intends are. I don't think it's going to be a huge impact on, on, on development and, and on growth in, in the area. We don't think the designated area is going to be a, a large area from that standpoint, but I, I think it's just something we're going to monitor very closely as far as that goes. The good news, I think, something Dirk pointed out earlier, is this community had foresight a couple of years ago to start the process of developing baseline data as far as the salamander and the population goes. So we've got some data that can go into this. Fish and Wildlife's been in sync with us in that testing process and in, in the various monitoring activities we've been doing. So, you know, I think, I, I think we're ahead of, ahead of the curve at this stage of the game, and I think it's just going to be really important that we stay in front and not behind on the issue.
And with that said, I'll kind of end the note is that we have a county judge who's very, he, he won't tell you this, but he is an expert in water-related issues, and he's got a storied reputation in that area. We have a very engaged county commissioner in Bobby Whitson for Precinct Two. We have two of our directors, Gary Young, who's Precinct Two representative on our board, and then we have you all, and I guess Mike, are you the, the, kind of in communication? Is Mike the one, one of the y'all?
Michael, you're.
Michael, you would be.
He's working with us on the permitting and on the waste of our plants, but we'll engage in this too.
Right. So that when we come together in February, hopefully between now and then, what are we going to do? We've got our ongoing research, and we fund it each year and bring the money to the county. Has committed 20,000 in their budget, and they've actually deposited in the fund already. We have put our 15,000 in, and we're hoping that through Don's leadership and communication with Ricky Preston, that we can match your contribution from your budget. And then Dr. Yelderman has a pre-proposal that I think is very good, and of course, then Pete Diaz. So we'll continue our efforts because having baseline data and then seeing is, is our data, is our data stable? Is the environment stable? Or is there changes? Or is it improving or, or digressing? And so those are the things that, it's always the end, at the end of the day, the best available science drives the conversation. And U.S. Fish just really has reputation of really sticking to that. And even though I was very negative on the front end with them, I've grown to appreciate their candidness and the willingness to come and meet with us recently, and Bobby was there, as well as, as Don and myself. And so all's well, ends well, and hopefully we continue to do what we're able to do. Again, we'll come back in formal manner with, with you to approve the memorandum agreement on the proposed research, once we come up with.
This is much like we did last year.
With that said, any questions?
My question, I have a question to Don. Don, is there anything we can be doing with our comprehensive plan to be proactive in this thing off?
You know, I, I, I think that one of the things that we've talked about is, is looking at our code ordinances as they relate to environmental protection. Right now, for example, we really don't have any stepped-up water quality development standards, and that's something we're working on internally to, to look at potential bringing for, to help deal with runoff and, and the quality of water runoff and those type of things. You know, we've talked about the idea of overlay districts, you know? Much like we have Main Street, much like we have the interstate, you can look at overlay districts that provides some protection through regulation in the zoning process. So yeah, there's some things we're looking at, Mike, that, that I think hopefully will come forward in, in the coming months. And I think as we learn more of this, as we get a better grip on where they're going to head with this designation, I think obviously those can influence some of the shape of that too. I, I, I think it's just important that we don't work against Fish and Wildlife, it's important that we work with Fish and Wildlife. And I think at this stage of the game, we, we, we've got a really, I, I felt good, and I think Bobby, I don't know how you felt, but I, I, I got a very positive feeling out of it. It's the first time I'd said, I was involved with some stuff in, in the Kamau Springs area, and there was a lot of contention, you know, over the course of years down there. And, and I think they realize you're just, you need to sit down and work, and, and, you know, you're, you're not going to accomplish anything. And so that's just, we need, we need to keep that in mind and keep that attitude going in.
Good, thank you. It's an honor to speak before you all.
Hey Dirk, one quick, one quick one. Is our, is the funding for the group that, that you put together years ago, is, is, is the funding now adequate?
Do you think? It appears to be. It looks like we'll, hey, we'll start with approximately $45,000, and I can't remember, Bobby, but it's on my desk, carryover amount that was in the fund, maybe four to six thousand. We haven't looked at it that close, but we'll have that report to show you what our fund balance was at the end of last fiscal year and what our contributions will sum. With that, this year, I believe we'll be able to, Dr. Yelderman, I, I know I'm an Aggie, but I just have the greatest belief in that gentleman from Baylor University. He is the expert on this carstow aquifer, and he has a love and a desire to work with the community, and I think we get him for nothing, we essentially pay for the cost of the work done by students. So yes, Mike, with the two proposals, I think we're going to be in a good place. The county carries more money into this than we do, and we, we, we essentially contribute 15,000 to the coalition, and we pay the 15, 16,000 to maintain the stream flow gauge, which benefits us. It just happens to have side benefits for the village.
Your communication with this board has really been a, a great, a great communication item, because we understand it, or at least I do, better than, better than I ever have. So that's, I thank you for that.
Well, I live right off of Main Street, so I have a bride that wants to make sure that nothing goes south.
That's a great asset we have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I can only second what Michael just said to you. I want you to know this community is committed to the environment. We went through a very difficult time crossing the creek with the Surloin basin, and we're not going to, we're not going to change. We're going to be right with you as you go through this.
Well, I think what you said is exactly right. You've got some really good property owners that are concerned about, you know, being good stewards of the environment in addition to doing things right, and I speak of the Barrows folks and others who really take care in, in the development and their planning. So I, I think that says a lot. I've been in communities where there's nothing, and it's, and we're blessed from that standpoint here.
There'll be a lot of opportunity in this next year, especially if some, some legislative changes are made to the statutory ability of Clearwater-type groundwater districts to actually utilize some of our funding for demonstration projects on private lands where we can partner in a, in a, essentially a P3 kind of relationship, which we found just recently, that we were not able to do that through grant fundings and leveraging cost share with, with our tax grant. But the day of P3 relationships is, is upon us, and, and the ledge has a bill that will be presented to them to make that simple change so that we can partner and then leverage some money through state funds through Text Water Development Board on their conservation plans. And I really believe, once that's accomplished, there'll be some really futuristic opportunities for us to partner. We thought it was already in place, and, and as I told KD and her husband, they caught us off-guard waiting to find out if that was legal. It was legal, it was not legal, but yet a bill is there, consensus bill, which typically both Senator Perry on the Senate side, and then whoever's the chairman of the House Natural Resources Committee, which I think still will be a lot of Larson from the dialogue with, with people in, in the Speaker-elect office, as of today, that that bill will, will work its way through, because that allows us to bring in those, those private partners on demonstrations and education and enhanced ways of being more conservative. Again, it's an honor to be here. Thank you so much.
All right, you have you. Thanks very much.
Don, quick question. Do we know if on the Main Street project, they're taking any of this habitat into account when trying to divert?
They are. And then they're, we, we got our first full mouth, you know, of the federal regulation with the wastewater planning process and those type of things, and they actually have used our data to go through because they got stopped in the same situation that we got stopped in as far as the creek crossings and those type of things. So absolutely they are. In fact, that's one of the reasons they were delayed and led in the project was because they had to go back and rework their environment, which is good.
So hopefully they're diverting things further downstream than.
Well, diverting, yeah, diverting as much as.
Thank you.
Any other question? Let's move to number four, please, ordinance. Consider approval of an ordinance of the Village of Salado, Texas ordering a general election on May the 4th, 2019, for the purpose of electing three aldermen of the Village of Salado Board of Aldermen. Establish early voting locations and polling places for the election, making other provisions for the conduct of the election, and providing for findings of facts, durability, conflicting provisions, governing law, proper notice, and open meetings, and an effective day. Don?
Sir Mayor, it's that time of the year again. As you know, we're heading into the election season from a municipal standpoint, and this is the start. This is the ordinance that actually orders the election. There will be subsequent presentations of an interlocal agreement between the school district and the library and us in relation to the actual physical operation of the election process. But it all starts with this ordinance, and this ordinance basically calls for a city election. And that city election will take place on May the 4th, 2019, to elect three aldermen this year, three aldermen. The election day, as I said, is, is May 4th. Early voting by personal appearance will be conducted. The election place, of course, will be the Civic Center, but the early voting by personal appearance will take place starting on Monday, April 22nd, and on that date it'll be seven to seven. From Tuesday, April 23rd through Friday, April 26th, it'll be eight to five. On Saturday, April 27th, 10:00 AM to two. Monday, April 29th, seven to seven. And then the last day of early voting by personal appearance will be Tuesday, April 30th, from 8:00 AM to 5:00. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance to begin the process.
Questions, please, to Don? If there are any questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I've moved to approve the ordinance establishing the election on May 4th, 2019, for the purpose of electing three aldermen.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's midnight, and seconded discussion. Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Oppose likewise passes. Opposed likewise, passes. Discussion and possible action, number five. Discuss and consider possible action regarding the allocation of funds presented to the village of Salado, the county of Bell, for school crossing guard, health nutrition, child abuse prevention intervention, and drug alcohol abuse prevention programs in Salado. Don?
Yes, sir. Mayor, you have the check in hand from the county, and we're grateful for that. And this is the next step in the process, and that's basically directing staff to go check to the school district for use of their school safety across the program. So staff recommends that action.
Questions to Don, please. I'll entertain a motion, please.
Your Honor, I move that we make the motion that we send the funds as received tonight from the Bell County onto the school districts to be used as designated in this ordinance.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion, please. Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Number B. Discuss and consider possible action regarding the appointment of a judge for the Salado Municipal Court per calendar year two thousand and nineteen. Don?
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of the board, as you know, we need to appoint a judge for the coming year. The current judge's term is due to expire. The current judge, as you know, is our now former justice of the peace, Don Engelking, has been our city judge for a couple of years now. He's expressed an interest in reappointment, and so it's before you tonight for consideration. You have the option to reappoint him, or you can appoint somebody else to that position. We do it for one-year terms, and so it's before you tonight. Our staff's position on this, I know I've been asked by a couple of you, you know, we... If it's your desire to reappoint Judge Engelking, we have no problem with that. He's done a, he's done a very good job, we thank him, for the city. You know, in his years of service, I've had the experience to deal with him for a judge probably, oh, it's been about a year, almost about a year now, since we re-instituted the court, and we think he's done well. If it's your desire not to appoint him, the staff's recommendation would be to look outside the city and quite frankly, look outside the county. One of the things that I've been in this business while I've found, particularly in smaller cities, you know, that if you don't have a local judge you're comfortable with, that there's a benefit to looking outside the area to the point that people don't talk about your court. We're blessed in this community because people don't talk about our court because it's run well. But there's nothing wrong with looking outside. One of the challenges you run into when you look outside of your community for judges, typically the cost goes up. There are a lot of people who do municipal court judge work and, you know, on a contract basis, and they typically go hourly. In our situation right now, we have an arrangement with the judge where we pay five hundred dollars a month, and that covers however many times he meets during the, during the month, in addition to any type of paperwork and any type of long call time he's drawn in on. There is not a requirement that the judge be the justice of the peace. You know, there's, it's not a requirement that he be an attorney, you know, but he will go through continuing education, that's a requirement, and we'll have to go through those type of processes. So that's kind of where we are from a staff standpoint. It's your call, it's not our call. I will tell you that if it's your desire to reappoint, we're fine with that. If not, if you go outside, we recommend looking through the outside from that standpoint. The one thing I would also add that I think that we need to give some consideration on, and you don't have to make that appointment tonight, but one of the things that's not a bad idea to have, it's not a bad idea to have an associate justice or associate judge also in place, which is basically your backup, he's your bullpen. If the starting pitcher can't get the job, none of these out of town, you know, you can pull in a backup judge and not delay the board process. Same situation, you know, as far as how you want to appoint that person, it's your choice, and there's no real strict obligation and requirement as to who has to be. So I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Discussion to Don, please.
Don, was there anybody else that expressed an interest in this position?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that question. I know that the incoming, now he is the new justice of the peace, congratulations, Cliff. And Cliff Coleman has expressed interest in the positions of...
And if we go with an associate or a backup pitcher, what is, how is the pay derived on that?
They would be in effect an on-call situation, and they would draw the same, the same rate of pay as the current judge. Or you could set up a special arrangement if you want to for that particular position. We don't have one right now, so we would work out an arrangement for that pay. Obviously, you know, you certainly would want to do it, but we're not increasing your costs.
Have you ever had a need for a backup?
No, but you know, I've been in situations where we never thought we needed one, and then we ended up needing one. Be it for some unscheduled vacation, be it through a medical situation or things like that, it's just not bad. It's, and quite frankly, I think the judges actually, a lot of times, would like to have a backup, knowing they have someone behind them, you know, in the event of a problem.
Okay, so has that position been advertised?
No, sir.
Has anybody, anybody applied for it?
No, I will tell you that Mr. Coleman indicated that if he was not appointed as the regular judge, he indicated an interest in potentially being appointed as a backup judge. Accurate, Cliff?
So what are the qualifications for a backup judge?
Same for a regular judge. They would just be in effect on-call, as needed.
So Don, go back to the pay again. You said they receive the same as...
We'd have to work out the pay arrangement. We'd obviously, we'd try to do it to the point where it would be zero increase in our situation, to the point where if the judge is unable to draw his month's salary, and as a result of not being available, then maybe swap it. We'd have to work out the details as far as that goes. You could work out an hourly arrangement, you could work out a same-pay arrangement, you could just, it's how you work through it. I think it's important that, that if you appoint an associate at a later date, and we're not asking for that tonight, but if you appoint and decide to appoint on a later date, I think it's important to understand that they will work as a team, those two judges. So it's important that they get along, it's important that they communicate, and, you know, quite frankly, energize each other.
I need to mention, I'm the backup judge myself. I've heard of, I don't, I don't really understand what they do. And I think that we ought to have input from the judge we pick on a backup judge, and we don't have that at this time.
Not till, not till you make an appointment.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion, please.
I move we appoint Judge Engelking to continue as our Salado Municipal Court judge.
For the next twelve months.
For the next twelve months, yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion, please.
So if we, we, if we come to find out that we do need an associate judge backup, we can approach that at a later time?
Absolutely. I'd recommend doing that, because that's a new concept, it's really not on the agenda to, I have something to think about, and it's, I think it's a great idea to visit with whoever you want as the judge. Because again, they need to work together, they need to, whoever you want may have their, may have a recommendation to talk to, we could bet. I think it's just important that we take one step at a time.
I certainly agree with that, sir. All right, any other discussion?
Question?
Question has been called. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand, please. Opposed likewise, passes.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we place the position of associate or assistant judge, however you want to call that, on our next workshop and invite Judge Engelking to visit with us on that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Opposed likewise, an associate. Number C. Discuss and consider possible action regarding a proposed interlocal agreement between the villages of Salado and Bell County relating to road improvements on Williams Road. Don?
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of the board, as you know, we've talked a little bit about this particular agreement. The outgoing commissioner communicated with the village late in his term that they were in the middle of working on plans to make improvements on Williams Road. And as you know, Williams Road is targeted for annexation as part of the school district's upcoming annexation. We were concerned that the interior of that project was maintained, that it would continue, and that the county would be able to follow through with that. In order to make that happen, it's important that we have an interlocal agreement that in effect authorizes them to make the road improvements within the village's limits. The agreement before you is an agreement that was put together, there were some modifications made by then commissioner relating to a couple of areas of that agreement. We noticed a typo in one of those that I visited with Commissioner Ryan about, he recognized the fact that he was pushing it to get it to the court late in the year, and we went through some language discussion about correcting the typo, and he was comfortable with that. Specifically, it's section three point four relating to plans and inspections. And the commissioner was concerned in particular that the county, at the end of the day, would have the final approval of the plans, which is totally fine. They're building, they're paying for, their standards are fine. We felt it important, though, that we, at least from the village standpoint and the school district, had the opportunity to at least weigh in on those plans and get a chance to look at them and make sure that they fit what they were doing as far as their design and what we were planning to do as far as maintenance and those type of things. And he was very good with that, and the court seemed to be very good with that. So the court approved the agreement. Like I said, we discovered the typo in the agreement that the commissioner had after the fact, so what we've got for you tonight is basically the agreement they've approved with corrected language on that three point four. And what three point four in the approved agreement says is basically, it says the county, it's kind of confusing, it says the county will coordinate the review and consider the input from the village in Salado ISD, will be responsible. Approval of the engineering design plans and specifications and for construction inspection and testing for the project, the same provisions apply to the review and approval of any modifications of the engineering design plan specifications for the project during the development and construction of the project. And the language that we proposed and worked out with the outgoing commissioner was this, and it is, the county shall be responsible for review and approval of the engineering design plan specifications for the project and coordination of the construction, inspection, and testing of the project. The county shall consider input from the village and Salado ISD in this review of the engineering design plans and specifications of the project. It simplifies it, gives the county the authority to make the approval, but it also guarantees that they will ask us for input and let us look at it. So our staff's recommendation is approval, it is a good agreement, I think it's good evidence of partnership between the county and the village.
Questions to Don, please.
Don, the section that I'm interested in is three point one, project development. It says the county agrees to fully fund the project, and if this, everything else, are going to be responsible for.
Yes, sir.
So we're really not going to have any kind of financial obligation except for just participating in the reviews.
And maintaining that road, which is not...
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. It's our road to maintain, and it's our road to improve.
Other questions, please? I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the administrative recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion.
I'd like to add the amendment that section three point four be revised as presented by standing.
Let me add to that, the interlocal agreements have always been a great deal for Salado, and I have no reason to think it would not, that it not be the same with our new commission. So it's something that the people of Salado, they're really beginning to understand, and I think they're beginning to be appreciative of the Bell County contributions to the streets of Salado. But I totally recommend that we do that.
Yeah, I think the thing, the thing that we've got to keep in mind from a village standpoint, and I think the judge would probably echo some of these concerns, and that is, their place is full, and it's getting fuller by the day. And we, as a village, at some point, will probably have to look at alternative approaches on some of these road improvements as we grow. I think the county is our first stop, it should always be the first stop. But I think we need to be, you and I talked about this, Michael, it's, we almost have to be a little sensitive to their needs, because we're second, we're second, we're in the, we're in the on-ex circle with them. And I think there's nothing wrong with that, because they've been very responsive, but we need to be sensitive to that need and future.
But the county engineer, Bell County engineer's always been all over this, on top of it, he's out here personally looking at what we're agreeing to do, and he's done a heck of a job for the county and certainly for Salado. I mean, he is an on-hands guy, and I commend him for his work in the past.
He's been all...
Good work.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for making an admission. An amendment to the...
It makes an amendment, it needs a second.
Second. Motion's been made to a late amendment. Second. Discussion, please. Question has been called. All in favor for the amendment, raise your hand, please. Opposed likewise, passes. Now, the motion itself with the amendment. Discussion, please. Or is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded with the amendment. Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed likewise, passes. Discuss and consider possible action regarding a proposed pay adjustment for the position of the Salado Police Chief.
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of the board, if you mentioned, if you recall in our last budget process, we talked a little bit about looking at some of our salaries and trying to get them up to the point where, you know, they really need to be when we're out in, when we're out in the field looking for, you know, positions. And the police chief is probably one of our first stopping points we look at. And it's a difficult position from a standpoint of responsibility. It's also a critical position from a standpoint of finding someone who is extremely qualified, and typically those people come at a higher rate of pay, and with experience, with education and knowledge. I think the current salary, you know, in the fifties is low, and I think it was low in the beginning, but I understand, you know, in the beginning, why the board set that salary low with that. And as we venture into the search for a new chief, I think it's important that we jumpstart the process rather than waiting until next budget, and address the police chief's salary since we're in the middle of the search right now. And I think that what we're coming to you tonight for is approval of a range salary that we would be able to look at, and then basically grade, you know, whoever we hire based on their experience, and allow some flexibility in that, rather than locking it in at sixty thousand or seventy thousand, getting a range, and based on that qualified person we want to hire's experience, we can, you know, level down on a particular salary within that range. Surveying the area is really not an accurate way to set that range, because you have, you have truly in this particular area, salaries that are all over the table as far as police chiefs. You've got some cities in this area that are, you know, paying in the neighborhood of forty-seven thousand dollars. These are small communities, I'm not talking about the Temples and the Beltes. You've got other communities, you know, that are paying in the range of seventy thousand, you know, seventy-five thousand. You've got other small communities in this area that are paying close to a hundred thousand dollars for the position, or not at that level at this stage of the game. What we're thinking is that probably a good salary range for this position should be somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, anywhere from sixty to, sixty to seventy thousand dollars. I'd even recommend going as high as seventy-five, depending on the candidate, and that gives you about a fifteen thousand dollar range based on qualification. If you want to narrow it to a ten thousand, I'd go sixty-five to seventy-five. But I think that that's, that's not a bad deal when you start talking about bringing in somebody who's been an officer, you know, for fifteen, twenty years with a bachelor's degree potentially, you know, who's got a master's, you know, and has the experience of what the city wants and the city needs, the man it's a department. Yes, it's a four-member department, but it's a four-member department that now has a reserve program, it's a four-member department that's going to grow as this community grows. I think we've all talked about the need for that, to get ourselves up to the point where we really truly can provide twenty-four seven coverage. You know, you've not been able to provide that, you know, because you don't have the manpower allocation to pull that off, and it's very difficult with the room and number of manpower to truly staff that twenty-four seven. So you try to schedule the peak hours, and you've been doing that for a couple of years. So that said, you know, our staff recommendation is that you look at setting, I'm just going to say, a salary range of sixty-five to seventy-five thousand dollars for that particular position, and authorize that and let us proceed, and use that in this upcoming search and future
Questions to Don, please.
This job would have been posted, we say, a couple of weeks, three weeks. Did we post... Three weeks, did we post a range or salary, did we post anything about salary under?
Depending on qualifications.
Okay.
Which is the best thing.
So the twenty that have applied had no idea, well, of course, they could look it up, I'm sure, but did not know what the salary was or what the salary range was, did not know?
Absolutely right.
Okay.
And that is not uncommon, you know?
Yeah.
When you're, when you're out in this type of environment.
Not uncommon at all, posted just like that, okay.
Don, raise the present salary.
I know he's under, is up fifty thou, a little, a little bit.
Any other questions to Don, please?
Don, how are you going to make the determination where that range falls out, is it going to be years of service, is it going to be educational, or is it going to be...
I think it's going, Michael, it's going to be a mix, I think it's going to be all of those things truly taken into consideration, I, I think, you know, ed- education's important, experience is important, approach is important, professionalism's important, your skillset's important, I, I think they're just, it really is a multi-faceted position, and it's a, it's a unique position, and, and it's a position where you're talking about small departments, and that chief is going to be on the streets, not just sitting behind a desk, and so you've got to look at that aspect of it too, you know, what, what they bring, you're, you're talking about bringing people who potentially may be leaving a, a high career at your, or a, a multi-year experience department, and taking this particular position, and they're certainly at a higher salary level, and, and if you're trying to bring quality, you need to pay them.
So what you're describing is it'll be a method that you will evaluate each qualified candidate, and that will sort of grade out to what this job offer would, would be?
Same approach we did with our tourist department, from a standpoint of that, we, we get a range that we work through and, and basically, based on his qualifications, you know, came in at salary.
And if it do go up, I assume our budget has the support or the extra funding in it to make up for that extra salary?
Yes, sir, you should, and again, there's no guarantee we're going to go up to that cap, but, but I think it's important to have the flexibility if, if you possibly...
How much do you, how much do you weigh, if you put weights on these, how much do you weight references that you talk to?
Well, law enforcement is, law enforcement hiring is a different, is a little bit of a different animal.
Okay.
Now, Michael, and, and that is, you, you obviously work off references, but you're obligated by state requirement to go through and do thorough background checks and do a full personnel files, you have a lot of abilities with law enforcement application processes that you do not normally have in a typical hiring process, just because of the nature of the employee that you're dealing with, so there's an extensive background check that will be done, where you'll actually go do a site visit where they're, where they work, you'll actually visit with fellow employees, you'll visit with them, a lot of times you make cold calls in the community, and that's in addition to doing the full background, you know, from a standpoint of any type of disciplinary action through their personnel files and, and those type of things, so there's, there's, it's, it's not, it's, it's an extensive process, and it needs to be an extensive process because...
So you actually, you actually visit the community?
You should, I don't know if this city has ever done that in the past in hiring police chiefs, but that's what you need to do, that's what you should do.
Visit like one time or more than one times?
Depends on, depends on what you're able to accomplish your first shot at, but I, I typically, what I, what I've done in the past is you go visit the department, and then you go and make community contacts.
Okay.
Position's a community position, and, and if the person is, is a visible person, it's important that you talk to the community about that.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions, please? I'll entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move we establish a salary range of fifty-five to seventy-five, with benefits.
Is there a second?
I'll sort it out.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion, please. Don, I think one of the most critical things that we've got in this community, particularly in a growing situation, is a very powerful, active police department, a very powerful, active volunteer fire department, because we're responsible for the welfare, the welfare of this community. I hope we do well, and so I do the best that we can.
Well, that's, that's why you take your time in these positions, and, and it's important that you exercise patience, because when you rush to judgment on these type of positions, you can sometimes make mistakes, and, and, and it's important that you look, you look deep into this position, and, and, and quite frankly, in a position from a public trust standpoint, you need to do that with, but when it comes to police officers, it's, it's an extra step, and the law requires it, and I, I appreciate the larger range, I do appreciate that, so fifty-five to seventy-five works great.
Very well, any other discussion, please? I'll entertain a call for the question.
What is it?
Question has been called, all in favor, raise your hand, please, opposed likewise, passes.
Thank you all very much.
Well, that is all the business that we have today, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
On this call.